Nora Perkins. We have Hallie Reeves. And Alexa Lewis. We have Anjali Natarajan. Then Caitlin Conley. Then I also want to introduce my assistant coach, Jennifer Drudge.
Emily, would you like to take photos?
We'll find a window. Come back over here. Not just me. I'm not a fall for tennis player.
And Mr. Inskeep again.
Also on that same weekend, our boys track and field team had a great deal of success. I'll have members of our boys track and field team come forward as we make a few comments about their accomplishments. The boys track and field team won the state championship with tremendous depth back on June 3rd at Ben Davis High School. Owen Schaefer won the 400 meter dash and the four by 400 relay team of Schaefer, Andrew Willman, Thomas Mauer, and Colton Parker also won their event. Several other Greyhounds scored at the state meet in eight different events. The title was the fourth in the last six state finals for the program. And additionally, in the last week, the team was also named the Dystat National Dual Meet State Champions. Head Coach Ken Browner was not able to be with us this evening, but Assistant Coach Colin Altavod is here and he will introduce members of the team present.
All right, thanks for having us. It's great to be here. And it's great to be standing up here and seeing all the great interaction we had with our administrators and the teachers of the school. Members of the team would be Owen Schaefer. Paul Matison. Anthony Iskender. Shuma Dosunmu. Bing Hudson. Jacob Fisher. Will Anderson. Tommy Mauer. And Drew Willman.
And our third group from the spring is our girls lacrosse team. If I could have members of the girls lacrosse team come forward at this time. Girls Lacrosse Team won the state championship over Hamilton Southeastern 13 to 8 back on June 4th. It was the third consecutive state title for the team since joining the CHS Athletic Department back in 2018. The team finished with a 16 and 2 record. All state selections included Julia Cherabini, Hannah Kim, and Maddie McGarty. We'll now introduce members of the team. Sarah Canali. Julia Cherabini. Avery Jarosinski. Kristen Jenkins. Hannah Kim. Reagan Fahey. Elizabeth Hildebrand. Savannah Fraugaher. Lauren Lee. Emma Mallon. Maddie McGarty. Caroline Forasak. Brooklyn Sosinski.
Now I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Oestreich.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here to recognize our three Administrators of the Year in Carmel Clay Schools. I'd ask that Mrs. Pittman, Mrs. Arroyo, and Ms. Carmichael please come to the front. We are going to start with Ms. Carmichael as Carmel Clay Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. Alyssa has been in Carmel for seven years, all seven years as Assistant Principal and all seven years at College Wood Elementary. The process, just for those of you in the audience, for our Principal of the Year, they were all nominated by other administrators throughout Carmel Clay Schools. And we had a committee that met that went through all of the nominations and then we settled on, not settled on, we named, I apologize, we named three outstanding leaders as our Assistant Principal of the Year, Principal of the Year, and our Administrator of the Year. So I want to read some of what one of, they all received numerous nominations, but I'd just like to read an excerpt of Alyssa and what one of the nominators said about her. Alyssa leverages her experience as an Assistant Principal to support others. She is always willing to partner with other building leaders and ESC staff on various initiatives and projects. She often volunteers to create and share resources that benefit all schools. She is a leader who not only excels in her role, but often goes above and beyond. Her colleagues rely on her for her problem-solving skills and often utilize her as a brainstorming partner. Alyssa is a collaborative and thoughtful leader who is always willing to share her expertise. Assistant Principal of the Year in Carmel Clay Schools, Alyssa Carmichael. And at this time, I would like to recognize Carmel Clay Schools Principal of the Year, Mrs. Deanna Pittman. Mrs. Pittman has been in our district for 25 years. She was a sixth grade teacher at Carmel Junior High back in the day. She was Assistant Principal in the district. She was principal of College Wood, Forestale, and where she currently resides since 2017 at Carmel Middle School. One of her nominees stated this. "Deanna exemplifies a collaborative spirit, high expectations, and is a child and teacher advocate. She is well-respected by staff and colleagues. Deanna looks at problems from multiple perspectives and helps to draw out the best in her staff. She is gentle and kind, always laughing, and ensures that everyone feels valued and appreciated." Congratulations to Carmel Clay Schools Principal of the Year, Mrs. Deanna Pittman. And finally, we'd like to recognize Carmel Clay Schools Administrator of the Year, Mrs. Ann Arroyo. Ann has been in our district for the past 16 years, serving as a fourth grade teacher at Prairie Trace Elementary. She's been a reading interventionist, an instruction specialist, a supervisor of learning, and her current role as Director of Curriculum and Secondary Education here at our central office. And one of her nominees stated that Ann is a great example of a quality leader. She has done an amazing job navigating the last two-year journey of English program evaluation and materials adoption. She is thorough, caring, dedicated, and knowledgeable. She has shown extraordinary patience and she has been flexible and willing to adapt more times than I can count. Working with Ann has been one of my best highlights of the year. Congratulations CCS Administrator of the Year, Ann Arroyo. And we have a certificate and flowers for each of our Administrators of the Year, and if you could take those to the front. Mrs. Bauer would love to take a picture. Congratulations once again. And before we recognize our two new elementary principals here, I might steal a little bit of Dr. Bearsford's thunder, but I know a lot of you will be taking off for the evening after we recognize our two principals. So I did want to share, Dr. Bearsford, that our Teacher of the Year, Katie Biltamire, was recently named a Top 25 Teacher of the Year in the state of Indiana. So congratulations, Katie Biltamire. She will move on in the process and the next cut will be the top 10 if she makes it that far in the state, but Katie Biltamire is already number one in our books here in Carmel. So we just wanted to give her a quick shout-out this evening. And at this time, could I have Mr. English and Mrs. Piper please come to the podium? We are extremely excited to share with you our two new elementary principals here in Carmel. Mrs. Kim Piper, who will be the new principal at Prairie Trace Elementary School, and Mr. Peter English will be the new principal at Cherry Tree Elementary. Both new principals have extensive principal experience in other districts. Mrs. Piper most currently was the Director of Elementary Education in Washington Township and Mr. English, a principal at Hamilton Southeastern. However, both of these new leaders up here have extensive Carmel Clay Schools ties. Both were Assistant Principals before here in Carmel Clay Schools. Peter was previously an Assistant Principal at Cherry Tree Elementary and then Kim was an Assistant Principal at Town Meadow Elementary before they became Principals. Kim at Crooked Creek Elementary and then Peter at Sand Creek Elementary and HSE. But not only that, they not only have that tie, both of them live in Carmel. Both of them have all of their children that are here with us tonight that go to Carmel Clay Schools and both of their spouses teach in Carmel Clay Schools. And so they are extremely invested in the community. We could not be more thrilled to have them. They officially start on August 2nd, but both of them have been working their day jobs and have been coming late and spending late hours at Cherry Tree and Prairie Trace so they are ready to go for the start of the school year. So I'd like to welcome and congratulate Mr. Peter English and Mrs. Kim Piper, new elementary principals here in Carmel.
I'd like to welcome Mrs. Piper and Mr. English and congratulations to our student athletes and our administrators. The school board is so proud of your efforts and are excited to celebrate your accomplishments tonight with friends and family. We will now take a short pause. We would love for you to stay, but we know that you still have summer to enjoy, so we will take a short break and you can go ahead and leave. Once these seats in the front are cleared, anyone in the back who is standing, please, you can welcome to those. We will now move on to consent. In consent, we have the approval of consent items including personnel report, claims, payroll, obsolete equipment, minutes from the workshop session of June 14th, minutes from the executive session of June 14th, and minutes of the regular session of June 28th. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just going to ask my standard question about obsolete equipment, confirming that it's donated to nonprofits that can use that equipment.
Yes, that's correct, and I'll be going to net literacy, and they use parts to build computers for folks that can't afford them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to action items.
Yes, Madam Vice President, I have a request.
Yes, Secretary?
Yes. I would like to postpone Action Item 5.6, Bylaw 167.3 on Public Comment, for a lighter date to allow for more discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying, oh, sorry, discussion. All those in favor?
I guess I just appreciate that we take this under further consideration based upon the importance of this policy. Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to our first action item, the 2021 Proposed Superintendent Contract, Mr. Andrew Manah.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Vice President. There's a statutory process under the laws of the state of Indiana to be followed for the vote of the superintendent's contract. Publication of the contract, proposed contract, is to be done 10 days and that publication was made. The public hearing for Dr. Bearsford's contract was held in a special session on July 2nd, 2021, at 8:00 a.m. In the prior publications, it mentioned that we were here to discuss and hear public comments and objections and support for the proposed terms of the contract. Those notices on June 16th in the Noblesville Times and again on June 20th in the Hamilton County Reporter. Also on June 16th, the website had the proposed meeting for July 2nd and the proposed contract terms. So with those matters in hand, tonight is for the final vote on the contract and I will turn it back over to you for that vote.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second? Discussion. I have one. Mr. Manah, can you explain why those publications, why those two?
So 10 days prior to the draft of the meeting, the hearing on the proposed contract, were to give notice to the public, both in newspapers and on the website, that the public could attend to discuss and hear comments about the proposed terms. So that was done in advance of the July 2nd meeting to allow the public to come to that meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions or to board discussion? Mr. Kirschner?
I would just like to thank Dr. Bearsford for the service that he has brought to our district and continues to bring, and I look forward to his future leadership. Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to 5.2, Applied Skills Material Adoption, Mrs. Dr. Dudley.
So this evening, for board approval, I bring to you our Applied Skills Materials Adoption for our English 12 Life Skills Program and FAP Program. And previously last month, I brought this as a discussion item. And this is a new course that we will be offering in that program.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second? Discussion, please. Discussion. Any questions?
Can we just, for the record, state what levels this class will be offered for?
So this is for 12th grade English, this is for our students that are in our Life Skills classes and our FAP classes, so our functional academics class and our Life Skills class.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley.
Any further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adoption of Policy 4335, Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions, Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this policy, 4335, Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions, this policy was reviewed by the Policy Committee and also our Head Nurse and our Director of Student Services. This policy was brought to the board last month for discussion and I'm bringing it back with the recommendation that this policy, the changes in this policy be approved. He's got a gun.
Dr. Dudley, please continue.
Yes, thank you. So this policy was on chronic health conditions of our students. This policy was reviewed by our school head nurse as well as our Director of Student Services and it was also reviewed by our Policy Committee. And the recommendation is for the board to approve the changes in this policy.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adoption of Policy 4500, Student Contact, Dr. Dudley.
Just one moment, for a second, I'm having technical issues with my computer. So this is Policy 4500, Student Conduct. This policy was reviewed by our Director of Student Services and also the Policy Committee. And the recommendation is to delete this policy because everything that is contained in this Policy 4500 is actually also in Policy 4600, which we'll be talking about next.
May I have a motion on the table to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are going to postpone 5.6. Now on to 5.7, Student Year Calendar, Dr. Bearsford. Did I skip?
Yes.
Sorry. Student Discipline?
Yeah.
Okay. 4600 is Student Discipline.
So this policy, 4600, is Student Discipline and it was reviewed by our Director of Student Services and recommending the changes to this policy. And as I shared earlier, Policy 4500, the information in that policy is contained in this policy. And so the change is, the recommendation is for the board to approve these changes in Policy 4600.
May I have a motion on the table to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Now, the 2022 School Calendar.
Thank you. Mr. McMichael presented this at our last board meeting, and because of our ability now to do, you know, an e-learning day, we've converted those two snow days that we had in the calendar into teacher professional development days. And this year, in order not to disturb the calendar, we use those three days before, and then one day at, you know, at the first day of the second semester, and then the final day at the end of the year for Records Day. After consulting with the Carmel Teachers Association, we've all agreed that to balance that use of that, those days, we will go with two days before school starts, two days before the second semester starts, and then the Record Day is planned. So that's really the major change, and, like I said, it's been agreed upon, and everything else in our schedule, our school calendar is staying about the same. And that would be for the 2022-2023 school year.
May I have a motion on the table to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll now move to the discussion portion of our meeting. Dr. Dudley, Materials Rental and Fee Changes.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring quite a few changes in our materials fees, changes, and these changes occur because we have either new courses that are added to our program of studies, or we have courses that move into continued use where the fee decreases. We have courses that we no longer offer, and so those fees disappear altogether. And then in some cases, we have courses where the consumable cost of the fee has increased slightly. So there are quite a few changes in our elementary, our middle school, and then our high school courses. One of the big pieces is for our social studies courses and our world language courses, they are moved to continued use. And when we, basically, as we go through a big adoption, we look for a six-year cycle for the adoption, and then we move into continued use for those textbooks. However, one change that we are noticing is in many of our textbooks, not only do we have the hardbound book, but then we also have the technical license for the book, which includes the book, and the students can see that book virtually. Many times, for the cost of those licenses, for our students to do a one-year continued use, the cost increased quite a bit. And so you may see some of those changes, especially in our areas of social studies and in our area of world language, as we're moving towards continued use where, last year, we would have adopted new books, but because of the pandemic, that has been pushed up a year. So we'll be looking at that for this next year.
Thank you. Board questions? Ms. Nalls?
Yes, you said the students will be able to virtually see the books at home. Does that include the elementary books as well as the middle school and high school?
Not all of our books. Many of our books have those virtual licenses. So for example, in elementary, yes, for our everyday math books, for our Social Studies Alive books, also for the Project Lead the Way, the new kits, they'll have online components as well. And then in our middle schools, the books, we have a variety of different books that have the online licenses, and then many of our books at the high school as well.
Were those books available last year during the pandemic as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll now go on to the first reading of Bylaw 0123. Sorry, I'm on the wrong screen. 0123, Philosophy of the Board.
Yes, so this bylaw was reviewed by the Board as well as the Policy Committee, and there was one change added to this policy was to do a board review at the end of each year. And that is the one major change.
Board discussion? I just want to note, so we're adding completed board self-evaluation, but we do already do that, so we'll just be putting it into policy.
Right. Excuse me. Yes, but it wasn't in there. We do that, and we've done, been doing that for several years, but it was not specifically in the policy, so we wanted, I mean, the bylaws, so we wanted to add that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. First reading of Policy 9120, Public Information Program.
Yes, this policy was recommended by our Director of Community Relations and to add information about our social media platforms in our policies. And it was reviewed by the Policy Committee, as well as, I believe, the Board reviewed this.
Any discussion, questions? Thank you. First reading of Policy 2500, Teacher Appreciation Grant.
Yes, this policy is a policy that we update each year. We receive money for, from the State of Indiana, teacher appreciation money based on the evaluation, and each year, we need to update this policy with the correct dates, so it's a yearly review of the policy.
Thank you. Any questions? First reading of 5416, Inspection and Use of Certain Instructional Materials and Surveys.
Yes, this policy is pertaining to surveys that do not pertain to instruction. So these would be surveys from possibly people from the outside, for example, a survey of where we might have somebody that was doing research on a dissertation, and they may want students or teachers to work on a survey. It does not directly relate to the academic instruction of students. And so this policy is just clarifying the responsibility of such those surveys. And this was reviewed by our attorneys, as well as the Policy Committee, and the recommendations were made from our attorneys.
Thank you. First reading of Policy 8330, Student Records Policy.
Yes, this policy was reviewed by CCS attorneys, as well as the Policy Committee, and to look at possibly making changes in our student records policy, particularly in looking at the information that we do share out in personally identified information that is in the student records that we share out. One of the pieces we're looking at is to add student and family emails, so our PTOs would have access to those emails for our families so that they could share information of what's happening with the PTO.
Any questions for Dr. Dudley? Thank you. We will now move on to reports for the Student Data Report. Dr. Dudley, again.
Just give me two seconds to log back in.
There's a new number.
Do you want us to go to the next one and come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I need to have a motion and do that? Are there any board member reports tonight? Okay. And then the superintendent report. Do you want to do that, or do you want to wait, Dr. B?
How close are we? I think we're pretty close.
Okay.
Should be coming up.
Okay, thank you. So this evening, I'm going to share with you some information about our iLearn results that we just received, and as you noted earlier, those results were shared with our, in the media as well. And so as we look at our iLearn results, we really need to look at what can we learn from this information? You know, one of the things that our IDOE, our Indiana Department of Education, when they shared the iLearn result, is to refrain from comparing proficiency rates from years from previous years. And so the information that I have on here is I have information, I have information from the last several years. So as you may recall, in 2017 and in 2018, we had the test that was called iStep. The iStep sunsetted in 2018, and in 2019, it was the first year that iLearn was given to our students in Indiana. And then we looked at, last year in 2020, iLearn was paused, and we did not have iLearn at all. And then this year, we picked iLearn back up in 2021. And as you know, we, you know, we're through a pandemic, so the students that took iLearn this year, they were, we stopped school and sent all students home, where we had virtual learning for the last nine weeks of the 2019-2020 school year. And then we came back, and we had a combination of several different learning models. So for our elementary students, we had in-person, where our elementary students had the option to come to school each day, and we also had virtual learning for our elementary school students. For our middle school and high school students, we had a hybrid option, where the students would come every other day, and they would meet in their classes every fourth day, because we have a block schedule, so they might have math on Mondays and on blue days, so they might have math Monday and then have math the next Wednesday. So in the hybrid model, they had it every four days. And then we also had a virtual option for our middle school students, as well as our high school students. And those virtual options looked a little bit different, depending on the courses that our students were enrolling in. Some of those virtual options at the middle school and the high school were taught by Carmel Clay teachers. Some of those virtual options were also, we used Indiana Online Academy to offer some of those virtual options, as well as Edmentum, which was another virtual option, which we use for a variety of different ways. But that was another platform that we used, where the students used asynchronous to do different courses. So some of those courses, especially some of our elective courses, were delivered in this manner. So with our iLearn, we can look at, you know, the state, as I said, they share not to compare prior proficiency rates to new proficiency rates, but what can we look at in our iLearn data? Well, one thing that we can look at is, we can look at, how are we doing as compared to the state, but then also, how are we doing in previous years and looking at the gaps in achievement, looking at the different groups of students? So this first slide I have here, this is looking at our English Language Arts proficiency with iLearn. And what you'll see is in the blue line, that is our district's results, and iLearn is given to our students in third grade through eighth grade. And the blue result shows the districts. And what you'll see is, in 2021, you'll see actually three data points. You'll see 2021, that's all of our students together, and then you'll see 2021 in-person. So those are our students that were in-person either every day at the elementary or in the hybrid model at the middle school and the high school. And then you'll see 2021 virtual. And those would be our students that at one point over this past year, the 2020-21 school year, the students were virtual. So they might have been virtual for the entire year, they might have been virtual for three quarters of the year, a half a year, or one year. But any student that was virtual at one point over the 2020-21 school year. So as you can see, looking at this data, and we want to look at the trends, so are the trends increasing, are they decreasing, or are they staying the same as we compare different student populations? And you can see, our trends here are about the same as compared to the state, as far as how far are we from how Carmel Clay School students did as compared to the state. Now, in the states, desegregated data, we don't have information on in-person or virtual as far as all students in the state. They did not share that information, so that's why you don't see those two bullet points on this graph. So this next graph is showing our students.
There it went.
Okay.
Sun underlay or something.
So this next graph is showing our students, our iLearn students, compared to our females compared to our male students. And so as we see for our English Language Arts, iLearn, we do have a slight increase between the proficiency rates of our female students as compared to our male students over the years. It's a slight increase, however, is not a significant increase in those proficiency rates. But what you do see is, when you compare our in-person students with our virtual students, there's really not a difference between how the students performed on iLearn as we compare our males and females. So this next slide is showing all of our gen ed students as compared to our special ed students, and looking at what are those, those achievement gaps. And as we look at these achievement gaps, we can really see, as, they stayed approximately the same between 2021 as compared to 2017. We are seeing a slightly larger gap of, between our special ed virtual students as compared to our in-person students. We are seeing a slightly larger gap. But looking at it over the years, the achievement gap from iStep to the, two years of iStep to the two years of iLearn, you're not seeing a significant change in that gap. So looking at our students, our socioeconomic status of our students, and again, comparing the gap, we are seeing, as we compare the gap over the several years, we see a slight increase in the achievement gap when we move to the iLearn as it is compared to iStep, but over, looking at the achievement gap between 19 and 21, we're not seeing a significant change in that gap. And then looking at our in-person and our virtual students, there's not a difference there as well. So this next graph is looking at our students that are our English learners as compared to our students that are not our English learners. So these are our students that English, they're learning English for the first time. And the interesting part of this piece is, as we look at the achievement gap between 2017 and 2021, the, our students that were virtual did slightly better than our in-person staff on iLearn. So one of the things is, we need to look at why. So a couple of the things that I'll need to caution you on is, this is a very small number of students. We're talking about 40 students. And so when you have smaller numbers, when you're looking at data like this, the smaller numbers do tend to be more sensitive to the changes in the gap. So one, but one of the things is, we want to look at why, why is this the case? Was it because possibly some of the lessons were recorded and the students had opportunities to go back and review those lessons? Was there more one-on-one or small group instruction? But we really need to drill down to say, what was it about that instruction that did help improve that? And that's an area we will look at, and starting with, who are these students? And that's an area we will look at, and starting with who are these students and looking at what their specific experience looked like. So this last graph, looking at our English Language Arts and our ILEARN, again, looking at the achievement gap of our students, and these are our different racial and ethnic groups. And as you can see, we are seeing a achievement gap for our Hispanic students as well as our Black students. As we look between 2017 and 2021, we are seeing a, an achievement gap, a significant achievement gap. And so one of the areas is, okay, now why and what, what do we need to do about that achievement gap? The other interesting thing about this slide is our white students that were virtual, you can see where that line actually decreases, where those students did, did not do as well as our in-person white students as well. And so again, that, just as we were talking about with our English learners, looking at why is that? You know, what was going on? Why didn't they do as well? And what practices do we need to make sure that we're doing in our in-person so all of our students are successful? So then moving on to math and looking at our ILEARN, and again, this is, this first graph is looking at the, in 2017 and 2018, our I-Step results compared to the state, and then looking at in 2019 and 2021, our ILEARN results. And looking at the gap, we are seeing a gap between, the, the gap is increasing in that the state, the students in the state were doing more poorly than our students in Carmel Clay schools as we compare from the state. And as you can see, looking overall for our students of in-person students and our virtual students, there really is not a difference in their ILEARN results when we look at those for all of our students. This graph is showing our math proficiency for our female students as compared to our male students. And as, you know, I showed on our English Language Arts, we really didn't see much of a gap. This one has a slightly more increased gap when we moved into the ILEARN in 2021 as compared to our other males and females in both I-Step and ILEARN in 2019. So where our females, there is a 5.6 points gap between the two when we look at our 2021. But again, between the virtual and in-person, not a significant change. So this graph is showing our ILEARN as compared to our general ed students with our special ed education students. And as you can see, the gap actually decreased from 2019, from actually 2017 to 2021, the gap between our Special Ed and our Gen Ed students actually decreased by 4.7 points over those years. And again, in our in-person and our virtual, we're not seeing a difference. This graph is looking at our socioeconomic status, and our gap stayed consistent as we look between 2017 and 2021. And again, just, this is our English learners and their ILEARN. And actually, what you'll, you're seeing is that our gap for our English learners actually decreased between our non-English learners and our English learners. And again, just as for our English Language Arts results, there was a significant difference between our in-person and our virtual students on their results. So again, looking at, this is a small number, but also looking at why is that, and what are those processes that were successful that we can implement for our English learners all of the time? And so this graph, this last graph, again, is looking at our results for all of our students, desegregated out through race and ethnicity. And as you can see, we have significant achievement gaps, again, just as with our ELA, with our math results as well, for our Black students and our Hispanic students as compared to their other peers. And again, you can see there is a difference between our white students in-person and our white students virtual on the ILEARN for 2021 in the area of math. And that mirrors the information that was in our, for our ELA. So the question is, so what? What now? What, what do we do with this information? And again, the, not looking at comparing the proficiencies from year to year, we need to caution that. But what we need to do is really look at, and, and as we do, we look at all of our data. We look at our ILEARN data, we look at our NWA data, we look at our student achievement data as in the area of grades, we look at other assessments, PSAT data, we look at SAT data. So we look at all of those data points, and then we look at what are the trends that we see across those data points? What is the information that we can glean from that to really look at what are the opportunities for improvement? Where do we need to zero in? Because what we need, as, when we're looking at our strategic plan as well as our school improvement plans, we're really drilling down and determining where are the opportunities to improvement and where do we start to improve? Because if we are not very laser-focused and intentional in those areas of improvement, and we try to do it all, we're not, we're not going to do it well. So we really need to be very intentional in that. So we start with looking at what is the data, building that foundation, and looking across data points to triangulate the data. Where do you see those patterns that the data is the same? And then what, so what are those opportunities for improvement? Opportunities for improvement that we have identified in the district as drilling down to our data of where we need to start is looking at our Tier One instruction in math in our secondary schools, because as we look at data across multiple data points, and we'll talk more about this in our board advance next week, but as we look at multiple data points across different data, not just our ILEARN data, because remember, that's one data point, but as we look at multiple ones, we see that our math, our achievement in math in middle school and high school decreases with our students, and this is all of our students. So that, when I say Tier One, what is happening in the core, in the classroom, in the math classrooms? And so looking at what are those practices there? So that's one opportunity for improvement. And then the other opportunity for improvement is to decrease the achievement gap for our students, our Gen Ed students as compared to our Special Ed students, decrease the achievement gap for EL students as compared to our non-EL students, our low SES students as compared to our paid students, as well as looking at our Black students and our Hispanic students and decreasing that achievement gap in those areas. And those are the two focus areas looking at from the district. So those are the opportunities for improvement. All of our schools are looking at their school-specific data and looking at the different trends that they're seeing, the patterns in the data, and triangulating their data to determine what are the opportunities for improvement specific to their school. But before we move into looking at those solutions, before we move into really saying, okay, this is what we're going to do to improve it, we need to figure out why? Why is this happening? And so really looking at the causes, and Ms. Jackson, I believe this is where you were going from, but one of the pieces of our process in our collaborative inquiry is really verifying those causes. So what are the causes? For example, one possible cause for an achievement gap between our Gen Ed students and our Special Ed students, one possible cause could be, are we providing on-grade level appropriate curriculum and instruction for our, for our Special Ed students with the appropriate scaffolds for them to be successful? Or are we giving them below-grade level work that they can be successful in, but we're not providing them the opportunity for that on-grade level with the appropriate scaffolds? That could be a possible cause. So before we say, yes, that is a cause, we need to then verify that. And the way we verify that is we look through not only the research, so we look at our peer-reviewed journals, we look at research on there, knowing that giving students the opportunity of, on that guaranteed viable curriculum, we know that all students need to have those same opportunities, but we know our students have differing, differing skills, so they may need those appropriate scaffolds. So we know that the research is there. So then is that happening? And we look at our local data. So we determine, are we doing that? So we do, we look at curriculum audits, or we look at teacher observation notes to verify that, is that happening as a possible cause? So before we jump to those solutions and just say, okay, this is what we're going to do to fix this problem, we really need to know why it is happening. And that is a really important piece that we look at, at not only the district level, but then in all of our schools with the, our school improvement process that we implement for all of our schools, and we review those each year in those processes. So with that, what questions might you have?
I'll start. I don't see it here, but are we granted access to compare our information to like surrounding to school districts? Can we see what HSE, what Noblesville, something I, I mean, I'm just using Hamilton County as an example, as like something that we could compare it to than statewide?
Yes. Yeah, so we can, we can see all of that, that is out on the IDOE website, where we can look at where we are falling. And, you know, one of the things that I don't have the exact pieces pulled up here, but we, when we compare it to the state, we are, our results are significantly higher than our students in the state in all of the disegregated areas that we broke down. In Hamilton County, I believe, we were one of the top achieving when we look at the ILEARN. There was a couple of schools above us, I think, maybe West Lafayette, I don't know, Dr. B., if you recall?
Brownsburg.
Brownsburg. There were, there were a couple districts that were higher than ours, but we were in the top five in the state, as far as looking at our results for ELA, math, and then they also, to segregate, they look at ELA and math combined.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you. I know that one of the things that the board has charged the administration is, is we want to see the student data, we want to be able to see and compare, so I appreciate you sharing this with us in our community. Any other questions? Mr. Kerschner?
Thank you, Dr. Dudley, for the report. Just a clarification, I don't want to assume, but I think I know the answer. So when we're looking at the socioeconomic numbers, paid is paid lunch, free and reduced is free and reduced lunch?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I have lots of questions. I'm trying to whittle those down for the sake of time. Couple things, since we know that there are some students that did well or did better than others with a virtual setting, what are we doing to leverage or provide opportunities for students that do better in a virtual environment?
Sure. So, so one of the things we really want to look at is why? What, what was it? And as I said, for our ELs, where we did see students, significant change, we did see a significant difference for our students. Why was that? Was that because they had the opportunity to review the lessons, were the lessons recorded, and they had the opportunity to review those lessons and go back to them? So are there pieces that we can put in our day-to-day instruction through our canvas that gives them that opportunity to go back and review? Or was it also, did we have more one-on-one or small group? And then what does that look like for the structure? So I think it's really looking down before we, we say, virtual was better because of, it was virtual? It's why was it? You know, why, why did we see the difference? And again, looking at where we did see that difference was with a very small group of students for our EL students, our English learners.
Okay. And are we working to identify schools that have performed well? When ILEARNed, when ILEARNed this past year, to kind of understand, you know, what they did to be successful, or, you know, create some kind of relationship so that we can learn from them? Are we also looking at that?
So as we look at all of our data, and as I said, ILEARN is one data point, and it's not, you know, the be-all, end-all, it is one piece. And then we want to look at all, you know, look at that in conjunction with all of our other data, student data that we have. And so as we look at, you know, we have a really good relationship with, especially our schools in Hamilton County, but then also in some of our other schools, like, for example, Brownsburg, looking at the strategies that are going on there. And we have really good relationships with our other colleagues, where during the school year, we meet monthly, we talk about different strategies. And so we are, we continue to grow and learn together as a group of public schools. But we also look at, what does the research? We have a very rigorous program evaluation cycle that we look at, where we really look at what are the best practices in different areas? For example, we're getting ready to start with social studies. Last year, we just completed world language. So what are those best instructional practices based on the research? What does the research tell us? And then what is happening in our own practices each and every day in our classrooms? And then where do we need to, where are those opportunities for improvement? So where do we need to look at improving that instruction and putting those pieces in place with that professional development for our teachers? And so we continue that recursive process in all of our areas on a six-year cycle for all of the different major curriculum areas that we look at. So that's another piece that really leads to, how do we continue to get better?
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Thank you. Dr. Beresford?
Thank you. Thank you for that report, Dr. Dudley. And I do want to say that looking at data is an important piece of what we do, but we have to be careful when we look at data, that we don't perpetuate a stereotype. We have kids on free and reduced lunch that are outstanding scholars, they are top of the lists, they have performed outstandingly. We've had Black students, Hispanic students, special education students who are at the top of the work that we do, they're in the AP classes, they're in the International Black Glory. So you don't, we don't want to perpetuate a stereotype that all the students in these categories that we, we pay attention to are failing. There's students of every, every category that Dr. Dudley went through, they're doing really, really well. At the same time, data is data, and every number is a student, and every student has a family. And we're going to keep going to look at those gaps, and we're going to keep working and working and working, because those should be closed. And, and there's no magic bullet to that, we just have to keep working and working until we can, can close those gaps. But I appreciate the processes that are, are put through. The point you made about virtual and, and in-person learning was very interesting, because we had students that were very much not engaged at school that did really well in virtual, and, which is fascinating to us, and we're still looking at, you know, what that was about. So leveraging technology is probably definitely part of that. We also had kids that did wonderfully in-person all the time and just tanked in, in virtual. They really struggled. And so, you know, it was, you know, the whole environment was thrust upon us, but at the same time, it was, it was very interesting, and we're gonna, we're gonna have some takeaways from this, once we, you know, are able to get through it and find some time to, to investigate it farther. Second thing I want to talk about was just, we had a very disturbing night, you know, there was a lot of very disturbing things presented at our podium tonight, and we will be investigating each and every one of those. You know, the things that were presented are not part of our value system here at Carmel Clay Schools, and we'll be getting to the bottom of that and see where these, where these are coming from, and we will address it. As far as my superintention report, I'm kind of right on the dovetail of, of Dr. Dudley's report. We have a teacher named Carrie Anderson, and the AP Computer Science Principal scores came out last week, and 27 of 94 students scored a perfect five on the exam. So that is, that's 29%. So one-third of the kids that took that class, that took the AP test, got a perfect score. And that's crazy good. So I wanted to, to do a shout-out for that. And, and we'll probably get some more of these reports as the, as the scores come out and we get more information. I don't know if it's probably the worst kept secret around, but Jake Mitchell from, you know, 19-year-old Jeff, Jake Mitchell was in the finals of the Olympics, and, you know- know, he was the youngest guy in there. And there's all these swimmers that are 25, 26, there's 19-year-old kid, and he is, he missed his personal best by, I think, a tenth of a second, something like that, but just, was it 100th? Yeah. It was, it was amazing to watch. Jake's story all the way through was just amazing. I wanted to welcome our three new SROs. I don't know if Ashley Commodore's out there or... Yeah. Well, save it because we're going to do an official, you know, introduction when, when we have our August workshop, but, no, I think she's coming now, we might as well do a shout-out. Hey, Ashley, welcome to Carmel Clay Schools. And she's going to serve at Woodbrook and Mauk Trails, and so Turtle Power, and, you know. And then John Rice will be serving. Is John with us tonight? Okay. Okay. And he's going to serve at Carmel Elementary School in Forest Dale. And then Dustin Van Tries is going to be serving at Creekside. The current Creekside SRO is Sarah Livingston, and she's going to be taking the job at West Clay and Collegewood. So she's transferring over there, so, but we're really excited, you know, that we're, we're going to, you know, we'll do the formal introductions at our next meeting, but it's exciting to see the progress of the work that, you know, we worked with Carmel Police Department in that, reaching that goal to have at least one highly-trained school resource officer in every school in the district. Obviously, we'll need more at the high school. And, you know, we're right, right on schedule to meet that goal basically a year from now. And so the, the plan we made with CPDs, that, that dream will come true next fall. So exciting, we're welcome, and glad to have the more members of the team. I know you guys are training real hard this summer and went at Nager Conference, and one thing I want to emphasize is these are highly-trained school resource officers. The resource officer unit is a special unit, just like the SWAT team and, and all the other different specialized units, so appreciate it and welcome aboard. For the public, that's a good gig. For the public, our free and reduced-priced meal applications are now being accepted for the 2021, 21, 22 school year. Now, breakfast and lunch meals are, are free this year with funding from the federal government, but what happens is people think, I don't need to pay for free lunch, but that's also tied to free textbooks. So I want to get the word out to the, the community that you don't have to pay that big book rental if you qualify for, for textbook assistance. So don't be fooled by the free and reduced lunch, you don't need that this year, but free and, the textbook assistance is still there. So, so we need to, to go ahead and fill out that form, and we can, we can make that happen. This is, just for, we're going to get our, get this out fast tomorrow, but our transportation surveys were sent out late last week, and we really want those responses by tomorrow night. So this would be students that aren't grandfathered or have special accommodations, because we did a lot of special things with the redistricting, but just for regular bus user, bus ride customers, we need those surveys because with this bus driver shortage that we have, we need to be as efficient as possible. So we've been doing this, this survey in order to, to really squeeze it and get the appropriate numbers and make sure we're as efficient as we can be. And it's back-to-school time. Ice cream socials, orientations are all planned. Reach Building, principal's been sending out information on email and website. We have a whole list of them. I think Emily's got a whole list of all the different things going on around the district as we get closer to, to the 12th. And then a reminder, families should check their power school in early August, so that'd be next week, that will, for your classroom and your transportation information. And then Dr. O. already stole my bell ringer, so, yeah, Katie Bildemeyer, she's just a fantastic teacher and just human being, and so proud of her and happy for her that she's now in the top 25 in the state for the Teacher of the Year. So you're a pro of Katie, and, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. As far as announcements, August 9th, 10th, and 11th are teacher contract days. August 11th is a school board workshop session, which is about school safety. August 12th, students' first day of school, and then our school board regular session is August 23rd. Make it a motion to adjourn our meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.